Greenbelt. Let's go ahead and get started. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session where we're virtual today because the Labor Day Festival is setting up around the municipal building and there's no place to park. So we're doing this virtual tonight. Uh, my name's Emmett Jordan. I serve as the mayor. Uh, council, can you introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Jenny Pompey.
Talky Pope, Council.
Danielle McKinney, Council.
Amy Neesel, Councilwoman.
Okay, and it looks like Mr. Roberts is on the phone. I think I heard him. Hey, so any information items we're just talking about the Labor Day Festival and all the, all the fantastic things that'll be happening for the next four or five days? So anything you want to formally share?
I had one thing I wanted to ask about.
You got one thing? Okay. I'll add that to the agenda. So real quick, we do hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholders. Uh, to gather information from staff advisory boards or residents. We don't take formal actions at work sessions. These work sessions and our meetings are always open to the public, except for those executive sessions that are authorized by state laws of the residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We do strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions and matters being concerned. So we'll pause periodically for public comment, probably tonight because it's virtual, probably every twenty minutes or so. Uh, during these times, if you wish to, uh, to make a comment, uh, you, you need to, uh, raise your, if you're on Zoom, raise your virtual hand. And we'll recognize you and promote you so you can speak, or you can submit a question using the Q and A tab. And if you're watching on cable TV or on YouTube or Facebook, you can drop an email to us to the email address to send it to is questions at count at greenbeltmd.gov. So, uh, these public remarks, uh, three minutes. Uh, and please speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others, or in general, we, we are all trying our best to be very, very civil because we're all neighbors here together. So tonight we've got a two-pronged work session. We'll, we'll be talking a bit about the recognition group policy, uh, reviewing the current policy and taking a look at some recommendations that have been put forward. And also we'll be talking about the Greenbelt, uh, Community Center, a business plan, uh, updating proposal to update that plan. So, uh, city manager Summerone, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I'm doing well. And tonight I'm joined by Greg Barda, Andrew Fallon, Nicole, uh, Walt. And obviously our city clerk.
Very good, very good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're also joined by city treasurer Bertha Gaiman.
Okay, so we've got a full house here. Let me see if I can pull up the agenda. Well, let's go ahead and dive right in. So who's going to take the lead in the proposal? Do you want to talk about?
I'll, I'll start off with a, I'll, I'll start off with a brief introduction. As you mentioned, we have a two-pronged, uh, meeting tonight. We're talking about the recognition policies. Uh, this comes up at a result that council has set aside additional funding for grants and projects. Uh, and council has expressed an interest to consider projects outside of the budget cycle that we normally consider, uh, funding for recognition groups and projects. So what you hear tonight from the team is a process that integrates with an existing procedure to consider, uh, funding requests by, uh, community groups, specifically recognition groups. So, so Greg will talk about that process. The second item on agenda is to talk about the community center and a business plan that, that was crafted in, in the nineties. Uh, it's a bit dated and the team has since, uh, advanced or, or modified operations that make that document a bit obsolete and outdated. And Greg's got a proposal, how to adapt to current conditions and look towards the sustainability of the center with a more, um, team-oriented collaborative approach that will be led by Greg and the team.
Okay, well, I definitely appreciate the conversation tonight. This, uh, process for, uh, for allowing usage of city facilities and for grant making. It, it's a process that sort of evolved. You know, we've had, uh, I guess we've got the current process. It's been in place now for about eight or 10 years. Uh, before that council pretty much, uh, used their discretion, consulted with staff certainly for recommendations. But, uh, it, it was not as formal as it has become. And I, I think it's just a reflection of, of how complex our community really is. They are, we've got so many facilities, so many buildings, so many public facilities, recreational fields. Uh, and at the same time, we've got a lot of different organizations that are providing important services and opportunities for our residents and others to participate. So it's, it's more complicated on the one hand, but I think the process that we've put in place has been very, very helpful. And as that process continues to evolve, I guess we're sort of fine tuning, uh, how we can best accommodate the needs of our residents.
Right, right. And, uh, the process I've had to evolve to be responsive to the number of groups that are, are interested in using the space. Uh, Greg and the team will get into that, how we've, more than triple the number of recognition groups that recreation supports. And the, the old, the old former process just couldn't, couldn't adapt to that. So the team has had to make some changes. So Greg, do you want to take, uh, take over?
Sure. Um, uh, thanks for having us here tonight, Mayor and Council. Um, we were charged with, we'll talk about the recognition group, uh, uh, policy first, because I think it'll segue well into the community center business plan, but, um, new in the budget this year, uh, there's, uh, miscellaneous, um, funds for council for discretionary grants of thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. Um, council had talked about possibly doing another round of the, uh, recognition group process mid-year. Um, we, it, it's very labor intensive and to have us do it mid-year would put us right in the summertime and it just probably wouldn't be feasible for us to do that. So we were charged with, how can we onboard these groups that show up after, uh, after the original or the, the scheduled cycle? And, uh, and possibly get them into the recognition group process. Uh, conferred with Andrew Phelan, uh, the, um, Assistant Director of Recreation Facilities and Operations and Nicole DeWald, the Art Supervisor. And, uh, we presented a memo, uh, to city manager with, uh, recommendation that thinks, we think that this would be a, a good idea for council to follow. Um, uh, for, uh, for our department, Nicole is certainly our grant expert. She's been at, uh, all ends of grants, grant writing, uh, managing grants, awarding grants. Um, um, so, uh, we leaned on her a lot and, uh, and, and we came up with this memo. I'm going to ask her to, uh, kind of, uh, paraphrase the memo for you and give you an overview. Can you take the lead on that, Nicole?
I sure can. Thank you.
I just want to add Nicole is very, very proficient at receiving grants, also writing.
Absolutely.
One of several city staffers. Yeah, proud to be in that club. Uh, thank you so much, Mayor and Council, and thanks, Greg, uh, for the introduction, uh, to our presentation tonight. Uh, on behalf of recreation, I just want to say we are so thrilled at all the wonderful community action that we're seeing in Greenbelt. Uh, we've seen the number of recognition groups grow from twenty-nine to fifty-one, um, since FY eighteen, when this current system went into place. Uh, and we're holding steady at about ten to twelve groups receiving funding from the city every year, and that's through one of two opportunities, one project grants for time limited, uh, use for specific programs and then larger operating grants, uh, for year-round services. Um, so we're very, very happy to see the community rallying to provide such wonderful opportunities and resources for their neighbors. We're proud to be their partner. Um, I do also want to give a shout out to, uh, Kathy Prox, who is the administrator for their recognition group program and helps all of them with all their receipts and all their questions. We take good care of them through the process. I'd like to thank Adam Daleman for doing such an excellent job of accommodating them and their space needs at the community center, uh, which is one of the challenges that, that we're here to discuss tonight and look for opportunities to tweak so we can, uh, make service to them even smoother. Uh, and I'd also like to thank Chris Cherry and Patrick Mullin, uh, colleagues in recreation for the excellent service that they've provided to the groups, uh, in terms of technical support and production support, especially for their events. Uh, so there's definitely, uh, some wraparound service going on, uh, for these groups in our partnership, and we're just so proud of all that they've been able to achieve and grateful to them for their effort. Uh, as the program has grown, I think council and staff have encountered a couple of challenges. So we've sketched out what we think are some pretty straightforward, uh, strategies to help us rise to that challenge. Uh, the first one concerns expanding, the expanding scope. Uh, and we have observed that a program in the recognition groups that, that began with an expansion of arts and traditional recreation services for the community. They were really an extension of what the city was able to provide. Um, the scope of the program has grown far beyond that original mission. And now we have residents, um, organizing around other wonderful and important causes, education, refugee aid, business development, a wonderful wide range. Uh, but it does go well beyond, uh, the scope of what we do as a recreation department. Um, and the city manager has graciously expressed, uh, that he's open to the idea of our expanding the network of staff support for the groups, uh, by potentially partnering with our colleagues in other departments, uh, to assist us in providing the direct support to the applicants in other areas of, operation programming and expertise. Uh, so we appreciate that support and look forward to developing what that would look like. Uh, in that model, the recreation business office would continue to serve as the initial hub, uh, the point of entry for all the groups regardless of topic. And then we would connect them with a staff person who can then guide them through the rest of the process. And we have looked at our application and policy materials, and we do feel like a common application should still work for the groups, uh, in of all these different types. Uh, we'll just be getting them, some staff support with additional expertise in their areas. Uh, so would Mayor, would you like me to go through all three first, or would you like to pause and discuss the individual points?
Well, we can pause just for a moment if council asks any, any questions, just in framing the issue. You know, the reality of the funding that we've, uh, set aside, increasing amount of funding in, in councils, uh, quote unquote discretionary budget, is not so much, uh, an aspirational thing by council, but more a recognition of, of the reality of, of the city of Greenbelt. Uh, organizations pop up, sometimes things happen and you know, there, there is an opportunity or a great need that council has to respond to. So by having a more formalized process, it helps us to, to make these decisions, uh, when council is approached. And the other thing is with the recognition groups, uh, sometimes long, long time, groups that are very active in the city of Greenbelt, for whatever the reason, there's a change in leadership or, uh, something complicated happens and they, they just, they miss the cycle. And they're, they're still continuing to do good things. They just didn't get the application, you know, in time. And that's just a reality. Yeah, I wish it wasn't that way. Aspirationally, we, uh, you know, want, all organizations to, uh, to go through this process, particularly the initial recognition process. I don't want to get too far ahead. But, uh, it's just the reality. There are, life happens and occasionally a really worthwhile, uh, organization will, just miss the, the beginning or some phase of the, uh, of the, the cycle and we still need to try and accommodate them when it's appropriate. Let's see, I see Mayor Pro Tem has her hand up. Mayor Pro Tem, please go ahead.
Yeah, this is more towards the second po- point, but it's directly related to what you just referred to, because I believe the, the memo talks about, that the, the, the sort of the applicant groups being, um, modification, allowing first-time project grant applications to be received and considered anytime, but that doesn't actually, fit the situation you're referring to. Um, so I mean, I think that's part of point number two that we hadn't really gotten to, but I, but I think, you know, you, since you brought it up, I think that's something that we need to, if that's the way we want to do it, that's not exactly what's proposed in the memo.
Right. And so I was just framing the issue from my perspective. Anybody else from council have any questions or comments? Okay. Hey, let's go ahead and move ahead. Nicole, please proceed.
Okay. Um, as you've mentioned, you've already, uh, raised the issue in number two, which is we wanted to be responsive to the requests that council was receiving, um, for out-of-cycle support. And the recommendation that we did put forward was, as you alluded, um, to provide an on-ramp at any point throughout the year, which is how we handle the basic certifications. So groups can come to us initially at any time seeking in-kind support. Uh, and if they are approved for that, they can start receiving services right away. They're then on our roster and Kathy would then contact them with each annual cycle opening, um, so that they would have an opportunity either to apply for recertification or to apply for a grant according to their needs. The applications do typically go live in November and we accept completed applications between November and February. There's a, a full breakout of the timetable for processing those applications in your packet. If you'd like to refer to that, it's on page five. Um, so yeah, our, our recommendation due to the complexity of the process, as Greg had mentioned, uh, would be to work with groups at an, initial grant application at any point in the year. Uh, provide an on-ramp. We would do a compressed version of the review process. Uh, the groups would come through that hub in the recreation business office at the youth center. Um, they would be introduced to the policy and information guide that we provide to all the groups. Uh, they would be about, their request would be evaluated based on the same rubric that is applied to the other groups on cycle. Uh, so that there's fairness in the evaluation of all applications. Uh, rather than convening a multi-board panel as we do for the regular grant cycle. Uh, our solution was to refer an individual application to one board or committee where there's the closest alignment of mission. Uh, and to have that board apply the same criteria to the application that the multi-board panel would have, uh, on the regular cycle. Uh, so that's a good practice opportunity for the board members. They get a trial run at using the scoring system. Uh, hopefully that would build their confidence and make it a little easier for us down the road, uh, to engage them as panelists, uh, in the full process. And it would be an expeditious response, uh, to the application for that group. And then again, once they are approved, once they're on our radar, uh, as a grant recipient, they would, be directly contacted by our business office about future opportunities, uh, that they could then apply for between November and February of the following year. And they.
At Mr. Roberts, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a question. Uh, you know, if we're gonna, uh, allow out of, all of the out-of-cycle, uh, requests, uh, then what, why would, uh, other groups even bother to go through the regular process? And it, it's going to be easier for everyone, isn't it? Just do it out of cycle? Or I mean, how's that going to work? How's that going to affect?
I, I, I certainly that's.
Is that, is it only for recognition groups that will be out of cycle?
Well, our recommendation was that we would only allow it once. Um, but of course there, there are other solutions.
Al- also.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is once you allow that to happen, then other people find out about it and they take advantage of it. That's, that's all I'm saying.
If I, if I may. Yeah, so certainly that can happen. Um, but keep in mind that, uh, once, if they go through the, the initial cycle, what we've been doing for years, their money becomes available July first without delay. Um, if they decide to wait, they, they would not be eligible to receive any, uh, reimbursement until it was approved by council, which potentially could take up to a month after the initial application was submitted. Cause it has to go through the advisory board. The report needs to get done and get back to council.
So do you have any, what's the?
Are you breaking up a little bit, Mr. Roberts? What'd you say again? What was that?
And what, what's the estimate for, you know, if we have, you know, X amount of new groups come in, what's the cost to the city and how we pay for it?
Well, in the budget, it looks like you have thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars already budgeted.
But are you, are we going to stick to that? Because if it's, you know, a thing where they can come at any time, then I assume we're going to be adding to that money.
That, that would be up to city council to approve.
Yeah, that's.
And our, our history has been, you know, that there isn't a great deal of fluctuation in the number of applicant groups. It has been pretty solidly between ten and twelve annually. That, that could change. Uh, but that's been the history of the program. Particularly with the operating grants, since they are more complex. Um, I, it seems unlikely to me that that would skyrocket, uh, but anything's possible. Yeah, well, I think this, 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 uh, Mr. Roberts, I think this gets towards the comment that I, that the way the memo is written, the suggestion is that, only the first time a group applies for money, would they be eligible to apply out of cycle? So after they have applied, at least as the, as the suggestion is written, after a group has applied once out of cycle, because something maybe came up, then they would have to go through the process, the, the, the usual process. So I, I don't know that you'd get a flood of people because people, a group can only do it once, out of cycle, at least as it is proposed now. Um, and I think in terms of the budget question, um, that, that we, I think something else we could think of is that, uh, we could limit the total amount that could be applied for out of cycle to a smaller amount, uh, than, than project grants might be able to get through the regular budget cycle. And I don't know what that number looks like. Uh, we'd have to think about what the right number is for that. But if this is for, you know, small first-time applicants, and then if they want more money, and certainly if they want the operating grants or after they've already gone through the process once, then the expectation is that they, you know, once the application is available in November, they go through the process through the normal budget cycle. So it's for people coming, things coming up at, you know, throughout the year. But once they know about it, they should go through the regular process.
But nor- normally.
So, uh, council member McKinney has her hand up. Please, council member McKinney.
I was going to say I can, I'm happy to let, um, Rodney finish his question if he had a follow-up question.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Mr. Roberts, please finish your question.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Um, my question was, I'm just trying to look through, um, all of the different, um, documents that you provided. Thank you very much for that. Is there a separate process for someone to actually just be designated a recognition group? So before they actually risk, they can go through the application process, what is that process just to be designated to be, be able to apply?
Hmm. Um, there is a basic certification application, um, which we did not include as that wasn't in, in debate. Uh, but it is available on the website with the other recognition group materials and groups, uh, when they come to us for the first time, they can apply either for basic certification, um, which just establishes the relationship with the city, but also importantly gives them access to in-kind services and free space use, which are both very important, uh, to the operations of several groups. They can apply that way, or they can directly apply for a project grant, which has a cap of five thousand dollars.
So is that, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question then. So is that certification? Do they have to go through a recertification process? So going back to what Mayor Jordan was talking about, leadership changes, the context of the organization changes. So how do we go back and recertify, especially since there's so much growth? Do we know that our existing recognition groups still are operating at a, at a level that we would want them to?
Yes, they are recertified annually. They have to reapply and we, we pursue them. Kathy in particular is so diligent about reaching out to the groups and does everything possible for us to remain in communication with them.
Okay.
And I, I'll just follow up on that. During the process, uh, Kathy gives me weekly report on who has replied, who hasn't replied. She continues to reach out to groups that haven't applied or said they're going to apply. Uh, she, uh, um, she, like Nicole said, is diligent about that. And if a group isn't going to apply, we make sure that they send us an email to let us know that.
Okay, I'm sorry. One last thing, just to follow up is if there is a way, um, like, because there seems like there's multiple steps in this overall process. Um, just for us to consider kind of streamlining and making as simple as possible, what it takes for organizations to become a recognition group. And then each annual process like that would be, fantastic, um, as something to do moving forward, that we can then also communicate and send out to other groups that might be interested, that may not even know about this as of yet.
I, I think the process that's in place, i- I guess there's three steps more or less. Uh, you know, you have to, that, initial criteria certification, those are for the recognition groups. That's a, a group is formally recognized by the city. So once you get that recognition, you can use city facilities. If you want to do anything further than that, like if you want to receive funding, there's two kinds of funding. There's an operating grant. And then there's a program capital.
Project grant.
Project grant.
Mm-hmm.
So that's like a second step. And each year, uh, all, all of the groups that use our city facilities and ha- they have to have that basic, uh, recognition status. So that happens every year. But to, uh, also address your question or your concern, you know, even with, with staff diligently following up and communicating with, uh, with the people, who had filled out the application last year, sometimes there are changes and sometimes, uh, the, the treasurer isn't there anymore, the president and just, uh, deadline falls through the cracks. So, you know, I, I, I'm really appreciative of the, uh, of the rubric that we have, and the staff policy that, that we're putting in place, that is in place and that we're modifying slightly. And, you know, I still want to reserve, you know, the ultimate discretion is, is up to council. So if there's one of those situations, sometimes, council has to step in, but this process, you know, it's, it's a good process. Uh, council member Neesel.
Thank you. Um, we've shifted since my first remarks, so I'm going to first address, um, what you just said, Mayor Jordan, and, um, that is kind of a, a one-off decision that I'm really uncomfortable with through a Jedi lens. I think that in order to keep things as, you know, open and accessible as possible to everyone, we really do have to have policies and stick to them. But the good news is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, Greg, Nicole, but nothing, you don't fall off a cliff if you stop being a recognition group. You just don't get to use the facility for free for that period until you fill out your form. Is that correct?
That's pretty much correct.
Because I can only imagine, Greg, how many times you've seen my name on those lists of people who haven't filled them out yet. Um, and I know that Kathy was always really great about saying like, well, just FYI, you can't have this meeting unless you fill out the form. That got me to fill out the form.
Right, right. There's, there, I'm, uh, you know, there's some gray in here and we try to work with the groups as much as we can. Um, but we also need to protect the city, uh, in a couple of different ways. So, um, it's, we want the form in hand. We want the contact information. We want to know what's going on in our, in our facilities.
Absolutely. Um, and then going back to the, uh, a kind of a previous topic, um, I really appreciated, um, Mayor Pro Tem's remarks about maybe having a limit to the size of these grants that are appro- or could be approved out of cycle. Um, and since this is kind of a brand new offering, I wonder if we instead call it something different. And it instead is some sort of like, not emergency funding, because that sounds a little too like eek. But, um, just they have to prove a timeliness, because what I don't want to do is set us up for, accommodating people who missed the grant deadline. And so I kind of want to make this a separate thing where it's maybe a different maximum amount, uh, different set of guidelines as to what, why we have, why it requires funding right then. Um, just that is kind of the thing that I would want, um, to have in place, just so that we're not encouraging people, as, uh, Mr. Roberts was saying, to apply willingly.
Councilmember.
The drivers, one of the drivers for us was, um, looking at whether or not you wish for all applications to be considered, based on a common set of criteria for the sake of fairness. Uh, so the recommendation that we made was structured so that that could be implemented for you. Um, so I, we would need just more guidance. If you see it as a separate grant program as to what the criteria would be for that as well as the mechanics.
I just have a quick question about, I know, how long, I, I, I like the, the current process because I think, um, and I'm not quite sure how, since when are we using this process that, that is outlined in this document?
Fiscal year eighteen.
Right, right. Because I, I remember that we did kind of revamp the entire, um, uh, scenario, how we're going to, how this is going to work. And you put a lot of work in there. And I think currently, I think this is really good. But, but I agree that, that if we, if we make any changes, um, you know, to these latecomers, we, we really do have to take a, take a close look and, and we might, set a different limit on how much, uh, money is available, maybe, just maybe.
Yeah, those are good thoughts. Yeah, those are good thoughts. Uh, my, my concern is, you know, looking at things with the Jedi lens quite often. It, you know, it's the emerging groups from uh, new sectors of the community. They, they seem to be the ones that seem to miss the deadline. So take that for what it, what it is. Uh, do you wanna, are there any more? I don't see any comments or questions from the public in the chat.
There's a hand, there's two hands raised.
I don't see them. Oh, there's Jade David Shion. Let's see. Jay, can you speak?
Yes, I can.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. Um, I was very interested in how this was going to work out because the reason why the original program was changed to the policy that we've been using since two thousand eighteen is to keep council from, uh, buffering, basically buffering council from making major decisions on things. Where it may appear like they are playing favorites to certain groups, it becomes very political. So to have a grant review program, more or less takes that out of council's hand until the very final approval, which is during the budget process. And I think that it's worked very well. I think it's been fair. And I think that the people that do the grant review are very studious and very, uh, careful about their, their comments. And it just behooves council to look at those comments and to ask good questions when it comes time during the budget. The basic certification, I think sometimes council is not totally aware of how many groups we have until it is budget time. Because that should be included in your, uh, when you have recognition groups during the budget process. You look at the, the grants request and the project group grant, grant request. And sometimes you don't look at the basic certifications, the ones that are just getting free room or free use of, of staff and so on. So I think that that's important for during the budget process, that you look at those applications. I'm also concerned that when you get a new one, especially in mid-year, that that should appear perhaps on a consent agenda for council to look at, so that you at least know what the new one is. That's been just basically the basic certification. And as far as falling through the cracks, obviously, you know, there are always somebody that forgets and so forth and so on, but it sounds like people are reminded and reminded and reminded. And basically, we just have to be very, sometimes very strict and try to help people, but also to understand that it's not fair to everybody else who's followed the procedures. If we are constantly kind of saying, oh, that's okay, you can come in late. You know, sometimes you have to bite the bullet and say, okay, maybe we'll have to wait a while. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I see Bob Rand has his hand up. Bob, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome. How you doing?
Thanks. Okay, well, first of all, just my sincere appreciation for the, the city's support of local organizations through the recognition group, group process. As a resident, I'm just really inspired by the resources that he makes available to groups. And as a board member of the space, I'm really appreciative of the financial support we got last year and, um, the, the, and this year, we got a, a project grant last year and then an operating grant this year. The, uh, the applications for the, uh, project grant and operating grant are a lot more challenging than the basic group application, but, you know, the questions are fair. My only suggestion to make the process simpler is to optionally allow an organization to submit financial reports using its own fiscal year reporting rather than the city's fiscal year. So in our case, um, we use QuickBooks Online and work with a professional bookkeeper and CPA. And our, our fiscal year is the, the calendar year. And we can, we can do a July to June split, but the application is so far forward looking. We have to do forecasting up to sixteen months in advance. So my suggestion would be to, um, uh, provide the path to, to allow a nonprofit to provide the past year profit and loss statement in the current year operating budget. And if you wanted, you could also ask for the most recent, uh, annual report nine ninety. So when, when the city applications are due in February, the previous year nine ninety would not usually be available, but the year before that would, would be, would be available. And in February, we're not really thinking about the next year. We're really focused on the, the current year, which, you know, extends, uh, for, through December. And it would really be helpful if we could provide our own profit loss reports from QuickBooks using conventional categories rather than filling out your Part D financial table. I think our reports would actually give you much more detail than you, um, ask for in the table. Again, my, my, uh, deep appreciation first and then second, that's the suggestion and thank you for your consideration.
Those are really good, uh, suggestions. I, I can see where they, where you're coming from with the suggestions. Sounds like you're, you're actually operating in a manner that's a little bit more sophisticated than a lot of other groups. You're using QuickBooks and you're working on a different fiscal year. So, yeah, the, the reports that you might generate would probably, uh, be more informative. But administratively, how, how do you think that would work, uh, Nicole or Greg?
Um, I think it's something we'd have to review and kind of kick around a little bit and see if we could make that happen, uh, Nicole.
Yeah, a couple of factors, uh, and Bob and I have discussed this a little bit. Hi, Bob. Um, it, is that, one of the issues is that the city can only approve funding for their fiscal year. And we want the groups to have access to it for a full year. Not only, you know, the six months in which those two different structures overlap. Um, so the way the grant process is written is to give you that full year of access to funding. Um, and I, I take your point about the, the greater convenience that there would be, uh, for providing information in your own format. Um, we have to balance the, the convenience of the applicant, uh, against what, what is fair to request of our review panelists. Uh, and, uh, try to make things as clear, uh, for council as well when they will review, uh, the application. So by using the common form, um, one gets used to it. And when you're reading a lot of them, it's a lot easier to, to kind of compare and understand how groups are, are working in relationship to each other. Lot easier, uh, with a common form than with things that are structured differently, uh, and may require interpretation. So various interests to be balanced. We, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I get, I get your point. Thanks. I thank you.
Okay, so in the memo, we've sort of covered number one. We've talked about number two. Do you want to move on to the third point or is there some more that you want explicitly, uh, point out in, uh?
Okay. In the third item, thank you. Uh, mostly, we were just, uh, requesting council referrals to the boards from which we draw grant review panelists. Um, if council does find it useful uh, to receive the report, uh, with comments and scores, uh, having implemented the, the rubric that we worked out together. Uh, if that's helpful to you, it would be helpful to us, we think, uh, for council to make a referral to those boards, asking them to appoint a member to the panel. Um, we have had pretty consistent participation from Arts Advisory Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, we have had mixed success in involving other groups in the process. And we just want to make sure that we're being as clear as is appropriate, uh, how important this service is. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that very much. Uh, I think, you know, uh, above and beyond the advisory groups, uh, council, uh, with, with our knowledge of the community, uh, we, we often know of individuals in this community who are involved with, uh, grant making with federal agencies or state agencies or nonprofits. So, uh, it's, it's highly possible that, uh, council can, uh, with the, the appropriate timing can actually suggest other individuals in the community that have the, uh, skill, experience and expertise that, uh, make a valuable, uh, contribution towards these, uh, review panels.
I, I have no doubt that that's true. The reason why we are tapping the groups for this service to date uh, is because they have already been vetted by council. So for your convenience, you, you've already kind of approved them. Uh, and we also really respect the, the experience and the perspective that the members have gained through their service on their individual boards. Uh, and by working with board members, uh, we think it possibly depoliticizes the process a bit in that people have made a commitment to serve their board for a couple of years, uh, rather than coming in for the specific purpose, uh, of making grant awards without having a more longstanding relationship with the city. Uh, but I have absolutely no doubt, you know, that there are wonderfully qualified people uh, in the community who would make great panelists.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I appreciate the point that you made there, that the idea that if the, uh, if there, for a off-cycle, all of that, I agree, that's not the most descriptive. That's probably not the right term to use. But if, if, if some of these boards go through the process with a single application, that may help uh, the, the confidence level. Cause I think one of the things, and I think this, this came up a bit with the, um, the advisory boards and chairs. And I think I've come across this when, when trying to recruit people just to be for advisory boards and, um, and committees, that knowing very clearly what the time commitment is, what the expectation, what, what agreeing to do this looks like uh, is pretty important for a lot of people that they, they're, that I, they'll be more hesitant to, uh, to, to, to agree to something if they don't know really what that means. Um, and I have to say, I found the first time when I was on Prab, the first time I participated in the, the recognition group process, process, I found it really fascinating. I really, I really loved being able to read more in detail what all these groups, and it was really mostly the ones that were asking for funding. It wasn't all fifty, whatever it is. Um, but I really enjoyed reading what they had planned and learning a little bit more about projects and things happening in the city that I didn't have any idea about. So maybe we can, um, maybe we can figure out how to, who, to emphasize how, how, how fun that is, how cool it is to see what the, the neat things that are happening in the city and be able to be part of it and emphasize, uh, uh, emphasize that for, for existing board members that might want to do that. Thank you. Yeah, if I may just briefly respond, I want to thank you so much for putting it that way, because that actually has been the universal experience of the panelists. Once people are on the panel, uh, just as you're saying, that they learn a lot, they just, it just deepens their appreciation uh, for all these wonderful activities and, and groups in the community. And I'd like to think that it's both personally enriching uh, and it enhances, uh, their service on their home boards. They bring back that added perspective uh, to all the other matters before them as board. So thank you for saying that.
Okay. Hey, there's a couple of additional documents that are attached to this part of the work session. You've got uh, some passages, uh, from, uh, eligibility and other requirements section of the Public and Information Guide for the recognition groups. I don't know if you want to address that. And also there's the application itself. So let's, uh, let's glance at that first document, the excerpts from, uh, current guide.
Uh, we provided these simply, I'm sorry.
I can probably, so, uh, you know, the things that, that have been pulled out, just to remind us of the basic criteria for recognition groups is political organizations are not eligible. Religious organizations as such are not eligible. Yeah, that's not if they are providing a service, but if it's strictly a religious organization. And, uh, you've got something on here, nonprofit status, recognition certification is available for nonprofit organizations. So, uh, Nicole, how, how does that work if a organization is formally incorporated as a nonprofit organization and has a five oh one C three, does that mean that they are exempt from some aspect of, uh, going through this process?
Uh, no, it's a requirement for operating grants, that they be five oh one C three or be in the process of obtaining that. Uh, and the purpose of that was because that means that they're eligible to access other grant resources, uh, as well as tax deductible donations, because of course the city's grants are matching grants. Um, so we know that they're in, in good shape to be able to meet their match.
That makes sense. I, I was just kind of referring, it says all recognition groups. And as a third bullet says, nonprofit status, recognition group certification is available for nonprofit organizations only, so.
Right, they, they don't have to be five oh one C three for a project. They, but they can't be a for-profit business. So there's a distinction, right? The actual federally certified five oh one C three required for operating, not required for profit for project grants. The project grants are only available to not for-profit, not necessarily five oh one C three.
Yeah, I, I think just, you know, not to nitpick, and I really don't want to. I would change the way that's phrased to make that clear that it's for for-profit organizations are not, uh, eligible uh, as recognition groups, and particularly for operating grants and whatnot. So.
Okay.
Then under project grants only, the, uh, there's a one-to-one, uh, match required. And for operating grants, uh, you have to have received, previously received your recognition status, but also you have to have previously received funding from the city. And once again, we've got the five oh one C three nonprofit status, which is there. But a group without that designation can work with another organization that is a five oh one C three as a financial sponsor, fiscal sponsor, and can still apply for funding. We just have to, to partner, formally partner with another group that is a five oh one C three.
And Mayor, just to clarify, uh, first time project grant recipients, it's a, a fifty cents on the dollar match.
Right.
We were hoping to, to, I'm trying to open it up and make it, uh, more accessible to some new groups.
Very good. Questions from council? Uh, Silky Pope, you're muted. It looked like you said.
No, it looks good. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I, I have it right here. I've been looking through it too. No, um, looks good. Thank you for mentioning the, uh, fifty cents on the dollar. I think that's a great idea. Thanks.
And, and I would just also say that, uh, collectively, all these groups, uh, make up the fabric of the community. Um, they save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, they're very important. Uh, they all do something a little bit different and they're very important to, uh, everyone in, in the city of Greenbelt.
Right, and we're really appreciative too, because I think a lot of things we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do it ourselves. So I think they really bring a lot to our community and our residents, and we're gonna have to keep that in mind, but, yeah.
And, and that's why we want to work with them and, uh, help them get through this process as much as we can.
Of course, and I realize that you guys help as much as you can and that you're very gracious at times. And so I, I understa- I realize that. So thank you for that as well.
Okay. Hey, let's move on and just quickly take a look at the application itself. And I appreciate that it's a fillable PDF file. Sometimes some of our applications are not. And it makes it a little bit easier sometimes for people to fill in the information. So looking at the form and having, you know, filled out this form in the past, there's some requirements in here that are difficult. You know, you also submitted a list of the, uh, twenty F, FY twenty-five recognition groups for operating grants and so on. And it's, it's a pretty good list. I guess it was about, looks like there's about
Fifty, fifty, fifty.
There, there are seven operating grants this year and five project grants.
Mm-hmm. And just to refresh my memory, so the, uh, funding, once, uh, the applications are submitted and they're approved in the budget, when do organizations typically start to receive their funding?
They can receive funding beginning, uh, um, uh, July first, beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay, and it's reimbursed, so.
It's reimbursed, they submit receipts.
Receipts, yes. Get the money back.
And those are, those are reviewed by Kathy Prack. If there's any issue, she contacts the people and, uh, you know, and irons that stuff out.
Yeah, I know.
The exception to that is that the project grant recipients do get cash upfront and then provide their receipts before the second disbursement. We, we made it easier for them. We removed the requirement that they, they front that cash to provide an easier on-ramp for, for new groups.
Nicole, is that the first time project grant recipients or is that? Yeah, right.
Okay, and the receipts come through, uh, through each of you, through the departments, or do they go directly toward, to the treasurer, to, to Ms. Gammon's, uh, department?
Uh, they, the receipts come to Kathy and Kathy does the, uh, the, the financial stuff to get uh, the groups reimbursed. Uh, the treasurer's office will cut a check usually back to Kathy. Kathy will pick it up and they'll, uh, and they'll, uh, reimburse them that way. So.
Okay, and on the project grants, uh, at the end of the year, does, does council get a copy or a link? Uh, there's a final report uh, to close out the grant. Uh, to close out the grant, but I'm wondering, I'm trying to remember if we actually got some sort of a paragraph or two to to look at to see the. The impact of these grants.
We do not, with something we can add. That's what council would like.
Yeah, I I would like to see just like a brief summary, just like a paragraph or two.
Okay.
Uh, cause I I realize it's probably the groups are already required to to report somehow back what they've done with money at the end of the process, right?
Yes, we see that in their following year budget usually. Uh, yeah, we see they they mark down their reimbursements and what they spent their money on in the following year when they apply for the next year.
Okay, so that that information is in the application, so.
Yeah, you see the app, you see that information in the next year, yes.
Okay, very good, very good. Let's uh, let's take a quick look at the application itself.
I think the, I think the, I think the operating grant application was posted, not the project one.
Yeah, I think that's what I saw.
Think we should probably want to look at the project grant.
Yeah, it's the operating grant.
Yeah.
I just had a couple of questions. I I know just from filling these out and working with different organizations. You know, it's it's really complicated, really hard sometimes when a group, a recognition group is justifying its application. And it's doing something rather broad, so some of our groups have a a difficult time reaching that percentage of green belt residence. Uh, criteria. Uh, also, the percentage of volunteers, you know, it's it's really hard. So how do you, how do you deal with a a group where the percentage of green belt residents is very low?
May I speak to that? Uh, there there are no firm requirements in that regard. It's a question that we ask. The program. Uh, does place value on significant participation by and service to green belt residents. Uh, but there is no set quantified benchmark for that.
Right. And I also noticed that there's a a section, a debt section, and I think that's new. I hadn't seen that before. Uh, is that something that is new or is it something that's?
No, I think that's.
It's been there.
Yeah.
Okay. It's for a new group that uh is buying a lot of equipment or something. Uh, they might carry a little bit more debt than other organizations that that aren't. Doing the pride, providing services and whatnot without a lot of capital outlay.
Right, and we don't see any necessarily any problem with that. It just helps us understand uh what the financial situation is of the organization. There's no penalty for it.
Okay, hey, uh, questions from council, concerns, thoughts? City manager Summerone, do you have any thoughts or concerns or suggestions?
No, I appreciate the conversation. We're taking notes and we'll work on the things that we need to follow up on.
Yeah, I I really appreciate the the conversation. I think I think you all are doing great work, and I think uh we are. Uh, moving ahead with a more formal process, a strong rubric, and it it's really, it's a great uh. Great way of approaching this uh, this uh process, so I'm greatly appreciative. Mayor Portim.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious because um uh Amy mentioned what her thoughts on the slight, maybe slightly lower amount for the. I don't know, emergent projects, not emergency, but you know, first time, whatever. But I but I am curious if other council members have thoughts on the idea, because I think, I think Nicole, you said it's five thousand for a project grant. If they go through the regular budget cycle, so we could look at half that um twenty five hundred. Are are there? Are are there thoughts on that? Or or Greg or Nicole, do you have thoughts on having there being a slightly lower limit on? The those that are that are not through the regular budget process?
I I like the idea. This would address Mr. Roberts' concern of uh these uh, where do we put the incentives? If we make it a lower number, it would incentivize them to go through the annual process for a larger award amount.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I think having a lower amount for um an off-cycle grant, first time grantee is appropriate. And um, you know, encouraging them to actually become a recognition group next time.
I would agree with that as well.
Okay, uh, McKinnon?
I I I concur.
Okay.
And we do have a couple of comments in the Q and A. Um, Susan Walker says, when you send in your recognition renewal, we have to write what we did in the past year as what we will do in the coming year. Um, and then Jay Davis comments that requiring a report at the end of the project is an excellent idea. It would make things much more accountable to council and to all our residents.
Very true.
And maybe it could be if there's a project on a specific timeline, maybe something sooner than the next uh renewal project. If the if the if the funding is for something in June, and then we don't see the report on it until. You know, they that group applies again the next year, that's a long lag, so maybe that's something to think about. And it doesn't necessarily need to be anything lengthy, but even honestly, if it were something. A a little bit of a description and some photos of the event, uh, something that's not like a, you know, a detailed. Extensive thing, but something just saying, this is what we did. This was successful, and even things that, you know, can help. Promote and say, look at all the, look at all the things we're doing.
Yeah.
We we can certainly ask groups for that information. I think outside of that, though, uh, from our level, we can provide a brief. Uh, synopsis on what the group spent their money on uh quickly. Um, but if you're looking for more than that, pictures, other stuff, then we're going to rely on the groups to provide that information.
The synopsis would be helpful.
Yeah, that that's fine. That's the way I sort of envisioned it. Uh, Councilmember Pompey. Did you have another comment, Jenny?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, it it sounds like based on what Ms. Walker said, they're already doing that to some degree. They're reporting out on. Um, what they've, what they've done um the next year, so I think. I'm not sure that asking them to do more is something we we really need to do. I think if, you know, the um. Mr. Varda and Mr. Wall could just sort of compile those for us and like create a little report out of it, that would probably be enough. Um, I just know that we that we need to make the project more cumbersome or the report more cumbersome.
Uh, I I will remind council that you meet with these groups yearly, and that might be the good time to ask them, you know, what's going on, like you usually do.
Right. Uh, Councilmember McKinnon?
Um, I'm just wondering um for the annual report, this is more of a question probably for Mr. Summerone. And maybe Miss Gaiman. Um, are we able to track against some of our other city metrics? How these groups are contributing to some of the overall goals, so. Based on um what Mr. Varda is saying, we, these groups help with our overall goals and objectives for the city. So it would be great to be able to align them with some of the other metrics, so um, you know. And I know that Mr. Varda in your report for your your team, you do that, but if we can maybe call that out next year as well. Um, that would, I think that would only help show some of the great things and how these groups are contributing.
We we do ask for participation numbers um in their annual report that they submit for their grant. Um, it 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 doesn't go, I mean, it's it's on their application, but it's not uh highly visible in the budget. Um, you know, so. Uh, if that's something council wants to, you know, have out in the public, I I think that's a a something that. Uh, city manager and treasurer would have to figure out how to bake that into the budget.
Yeah, or maybe somehow just department hits sort of keeping that that in mind as you're developing your your management objectives or something. It's another reference point to 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 just, you know, bring up as far as achieving your your own departmental goals. If there's a a group that you're working with and it's doing fantastic things that are en- enabling you to accomplish. Uh, your short and long-term goals to to highlight that. Uh, Nicole, DeWalt?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a clarifying question. Um, for grants that are awarded outside of the annual application cycle. Uh, it would be helpful to recreation to know whether or not you wished to have those evaluated using. Whether or not you wish the groups to use the common application and evaluation rubric. Uh, or whether you wish to accept appeals in other forms. Um, and how you would like them evaluated.
No, I I think the rubric is very thorough. I think it's a good criteria, general criterion. And I think there's enough flexibility, maybe if there was another box or something for other reasons, other criteria. Perhaps we can augment the application a little bit, but just in general, and you know, being someone that's very familiar with uh grant-making rubrics. You know, I think it's it's a good uh, good framework that we have.
Thank you.
Hey, there's, and we've covered a lot in the last hour, uh, and and I'm I'm appreciative of the the thought. That staff has put into uh into this process. Uh, one thing, uh, though, I just wanted to quickly circle back on. So now what happens when a a group does not? Spend the money is, once again, life happens, and I guess during COVID, a great example, we we made the. Grant allocations and a lot of the groups couldn't spend the money. So what happens? Uh, when a group is not able to uh spend the resources for an operating grant or project grant? Uh, so would they be able to, would the money roll over to the next year, or would they be able to apply for a different, modify the grant? Or what what happens? Cause I know that that does happen from time to time.
It it does happen from time to time, but rarely. Uh, we remind these groups a lot. Kathy, again, reminds them that they have this much money to spend and it's due on this date, so. Uh, um, we do make sure that they're aware. If if they don't spend the money, it just stays, uh. It goes back into the general fund. Um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't penalize them. The following year unless they don't match the the money that they spent.
And and Mayor, I'm happy to answer that question. In general, any unspent dollars goes to the fund balance. And then hopefully everyone remember we have the financial policies, rainy day policy, budget stabilization, those policies that. Uh, the balance would go into.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
But you you mentioned something with the with the match. So has that been, has that come up a couple of times in the last year where a group was able to to finish a project more or less, but they fell a little short on the match?
And again, occasionally that happens, not routinely.
Okay. Other questions from council? If not, we have covered a lot, and I'm looking forward to uh. To this coming up at a council meeting in the near future. You you've heard some of the comments that council has made. Uh, ultimately, council will talk it over in a meeting and will take an action. But uh, hopefully, we've made some good suggestions, but yeah, I and and council uh really, really appreciate the uh the work that you're doing to. To facilitate these uh projects from community groups and finding ways to, an equitable way for for groups to. To have access to our facilities or ballfields and and to do innovative projects that are beyond the capacity of of the city to to handle on its own, so. Really appreciate it.
We have one more comment in the.
Yeah, I see. So it's from Jay Davis, and she says, what happens if a group has a project and does not apply the next year? Then a report after the project complete is completed would be a good idea. Yeah, well, I think, yeah, that's a good point. So if you could uh just keep this in mind and and find a way to uh report out. It could just be pictures, it could be a couple of uh paragraphs, success of a project. If there was some significant hindrances or problems that were that came up or good ideas for what to do in the future. It would be good to to get a little bit more feedback. Uh, particularly from from groups that are applying uh for more than one year. Just if it's an ongoing project, but I guess with project grants, are they one time, or can someone, can an organization apply for a project grant? Every single year or operating? With operating grants, I imagine, or I guess you can apply each year for an operating grant. Or the project grants?
You can apply. You can apply for a project grant each year.
Uh huh.
Uh, Fonca has basically done that um for their music festivals, because each of the projects that are funding are of a limited scope. Uh, so so it's fine to do that in successive years. Uh, but to the point about the report. Uh, we are requiring the organizations to submit a match certification, a financial statement at the end of the year. Uh, so it would not be difficult for us to add uh space for them to provide a summary paragraph. Uh, addressing the points that that you've raised that you'd like to hear about sooner.
That would be good, and I concur with uh with Councilmember Pompey. I don't want to add a a lot of extra work, but it would be great to to get some feedback at the end of the project. Particularly if it's something that that the city would want to take on itself at some point in the future, because a a project has worked out so well. That it's something that the city might want to formally incorporate into one of its activities. So, thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Andrew, for all that you have put forward. And we appreciate the information. At this time, I'd like to kind of move on to the next section of the work session. And talk a little bit about the Community Center Master Plan. Uh, and let's see, can we bring that up on the screen by any chance? And Greg, do you want to kind of frame?
Yeah, I can, I can give you a quick uh kind of uh historical uh background on this, so. Um, it's the Community Center Business Plan. It was um established. Uh, the date on it is nineteen ninety four, so it's thirty years old. Um, it uh dates back to the opening of the Community Center, which was actually in nineteen ninety six. Um, uh, in, however, in nineteen eighty nine, council established the Community Center Task Force. And they were charged with um by reaching out to the community and stakeholders and. And um through surveys to kind of develop a plan or guidelines on how the community center was going to be used. You know, they had this enormous building with a lot of space and um, and and they wanted to figure out. What the heck are we going to put in there? Um, so this plan, actually, the author of this business plan was Kathy Salgado. Who was the first community center supervisor. Um, she put this together based on information that the task force uncovered.
Hey, hey, Greg, I I don't want to uh to interrupt. Sure. Do you remember, who were some of the the folks that served on that that task force?
So I I I have that note here, and I think it's important that we mention their names. A lot, some of them have passed on, but these were the the people that had the vision. Of uh, of of getting the 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 community center in place and what would go into it and. And their na- and their their names are also on a plaque in the community center, but uh just to just to mention it in this work session. Uh, William Stratton, Barbara Simon, uh Janet Jacobs Parker, Keith Chernikoff, Tony Pisano, Maria Tuziant. Uh, Joyce Chestnut, Sharon Alfaro, Brenda Cooley, Sandra Schwartz, and James Maher. Were the, were the task force established in nineteen eighty nine.
That's a great group.
Yeah, uh, so they did a lot of um, a a lot of hard work, a lot of time went into this. Um, um, so the information that they uncovered. Uh, Kathy Salgado, at the time, she was the community, first community center center supervisor, put this plan in place in nineteen ninety four. Um, so. Obviously, over the years, things have changed a little bit. Um, we went from a. Uh, recognition groups uh from about twenty at that time to over fifty now. Uh, our activity guide was twenty pages, now it's sixty pages, which just shows we have many, many more programs. And um, you know, and we also serve rentals in the community center. Um. So we kind of have the confluence of recreation programs, recognition groups, and rentals. All competing for space in the community center.
Hey, hey, Greg.
Yeah.
Hate to interrupt.
It's all right.
On page eleven, I guess, is that page eleven there? Which is a budget. Yeah, I'm looking at that, and it just reminds me of something. This document was typed on a typewriter.
And handwritten.
Yeah, I'm looking at the font, and it's it's by the font. You don't see that so much.
No, no. And we we may still have that typewriter here. That's how I kind of figured out who did the document, because I recognized the handwriting as Kathy Salgado. And she actually just out of happenstance dropped into my office yesterday. Cause she, in the area, as I was looking at this document, and she confirmed she was the author of this document. I don't think it ever went to council for adoption. Uh, I think it stayed at the staff level. I think the city manager at the time was uh Mr. Hobbs. And uh, they just used this as not so much a business plan, but as a guiding document or a vision. So um, you know, I think it served as per, it served the purpose for the time. Obviously, things have changed. We've made some changes over the years. Um, we we recognize uh. We we recognize uh. The community's thirst for the arts, so we repositioned the uh general Community Center Coordinator into the arts area. Um, uh, we've repurposed rooms. Uh, there was a dark room and it wasn't getting very much used, but the ceramics program was was. Robust, so we repurposed that room to serve, help support ceramics program. We've added a halftime administrator. Um, to help with registration and other chores that go on in the building, so. We've made some changes over the years that I think has served the community very well. Um, but we're dealing with this confluence of all these groups coming together wanting space and we're handling that on the on the staff level. We are very responsive to the community. Uh, we recognize a need. Uh, we try to handle it. Um, there are times where uh. Uh, we have to tell people no, and that includes even within our own department. Um, so. Uh, I think we've done a really good job at being responsive to the community. Uh, we're working on a plan or procedures to help us. Uh, provide good customer service to our rental folks and uh. Having space for our uh own programs and uh providing more space for. Uh, our community groups as well.
I think Jay Davis has a uh comment, probably some additional context. Jay, are you there?
Yeah, um, just wanted to do a real brief history. Greg did a good job of laying the the uh. Basics for this. Uh, we just have to remind folks who are in council, except for Rodney, because he was on council at that time along with myself. It was a very controversial time. Because we originally were going to do a community center with the Old North End School. But the Board of Education wanted to build a new school. And they were going to level. The the um. Our, you know, our the Community Center. And of course, everybody went bonkers on that because of its artistic. And historical background. So city made a switch. And we got property of centers, what was Center School at that time became the Community Center. However. What everyone said is, how are we going to fill this building? How are we going to finance this building? How are we going to be able to maintain this building? And repair the building. So there was a city bond bill and so forth. It was very controversial. There was a referendum on whether we should do this or not. And it wasn't exactly. Um, was a close election, actually. Uh, so the task force and the business plan was basically to provide reasons why we should have this building. And why we should maintain it and repair, bring it up to to code and everything. It cost us a great deal of money. But I think everyone at at. Will admit that it was probably one of the best decisions the city ever made because it is a fully used. Property. It's not just sitting there as a white elephant as a lot of people thought it was going to become. And in fact, it's to the point where it's bursting at the seams. It's so used, we are trying to find storage space for everybody and so forth and so on. So I think we just have to remember that the whole thing kind of came out of. Controversy and the community was able to work it out and provide a really tremendous amenity for the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
I should say, I I did meet with with Jay today and picked her brain a little bit and she shared some of that information with me. But uh, she she framed it much better than I could, so thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Um, we do have.
What year was that that referendum, just out of curiosity? We're trying, we were trying to remember ourselves. It was before I was on council. That I know, so that was before nineteen ninety-three. So somewhere in there and we probably have a record of that particular referendum. It should be in our list of elections.
I believe it was nineteen eighty-nine. Just before that.
It it probably was. It probably was around that time because the task force was formed in eighty-nine, so I'd think that referendum would have to happen first.
Right, yeah.
I think nineteen eighty-five mentioned, but I don't know if that's the date.
Yeah, the referendum wasn't until nineteen eighty-nine. Can I make a comment?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
I appreciate it. I think, you know, we're we're hearing a lot of talk now about, you know, how the place is uh bursting at the seams and so on. And uh. People at the time realized that, you know, I mean, yeah, it seemed like a big building and how do you fill it up, but. Really, the the main concern of most of the residents back then. Was that the building be used for, you know, things that the. You you know, community things like, you know, the arts and and that kind of thing and not as a city office building. I mean, that was, that was a big thing. Everybody thought that, you know, okay, we're going to get this building and then the city's gonna. You know, start using the office building and we're not going to have a space for, you know, the artists and other people that want to use the building. And that was, that was a big uh part of the controversy. And the council at the time. Made it clear that that the policy was going to be that it be is not be used. To the office building, not be. Would not be so concerned about uh. You know, uh, how much. Uh, revenue we bring in from the community activities that are in there. You know, that that is in in any way that we can do is would be. Uh, open, you know, and affordable to to the regular pe- you know, regular people in the city. So, yeah, that that was uh, Jay is right, it was very controversial and the. And the vote was very close on that. But uh, yeah, and and I'll tell you another thing, you know, it required, it required a seven cent uh. Tax increase, you know, all at one time. And back then, seven cents was a big. Big jump in tax rate. And uh. Actually, some of the council members, you know, after the vote was taken and we were had to embark on this process of. Actually spending that money. You know, putting that tax into effect. Uh, some of the uh council members were reluctant. Uh, you know, to raise the taxes seven cents all one time. You know, although they, you know, eventually relented because they realized, you know, people voted for it. You know, you know, as close as it was, it was a vote. You know, was, it was not a binding vote, but it was a. You know, it was an advisory vote.
Right.
Yeah. It was interesting.
And also, we did get state uh grants along with the city bond. I mean, we, it was a great. It was interesting how everything got financed and completed. And the job was done very well. I I don't think anyone will have a problem with how the Community Center looks. We maintained the historical. Look of it. Uh, but we also made sure that it was open to to everybody and to many, many things. That's why the business plan was set up the way it was. To show how it could be used by as many diverse groups and diverse ideas as possible.
That's great.
I think. I think that needs to be carried on into the future because I've seen some of the. You know, ideas rolling around, putting different uh. Uh, yeah, city. Apartments in there and I think we need to avoid that at all, all costs.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Summer, and and this is great context, but here we are almost forty years later. And uh, you know, there's so many things that happened just in terms of the uh working with. Community groups uh from inside. Uh, of Greenbelt, also groups outside of Greenbelt. Uh, the just the the needs of the community. So, you know, I I think it's wholly appropriate to. Uh, circle back and uh to listen to the presentation on uh, you know, what, where we need to uh to focus. Uh, given the current uh situation. Mr. Summer?
Yes, according to Diane Olberg in the News Review Edition of June twenty-ninth nineteen eighty-nine. The three million dollar bond ordinance narrowly passed by seventy-one votes. The vote count was eight hundred and thirty-three in favor. To seven hundred and sixty-two. So that was fifty-one point five percent of the vote to forty-seven point one percent of the vote.
Are you breaking up, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I mean, it was very close, you know. But, there you go. Now, you know. It worked out. And then the funny thing is it ended up costing us seven million dollars, not three million.
Hey, uh, Greg.
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and uh, you know, talk a little bit about the vision, not so much the vision, but the uh. The pragmatic uh. Path forward, where we are, we need to go.
Yeah, so I I want to assure council that, you know, when we have to make a tough decision. It it's, it's always based on what's best for the community, not the bottom line. Um, um, and there are times where we have to do that, but. Where we are at the staff level, looking at putting new procedures in place so uh we can provide. Uh, good customer service to our our tenants and our renters and um. And uh, space for our ever-growing programs that take place in the Community Center. You know. You know, it it's, it's not an easy place to manage. Uh, with all the different needs from the organizations and within our own uh organization. But I think it's something we can handle at the staff level. So uh, Andrew, can you share? Some of the uh. The leases that we have in the currently have in the Community Center? Who those lease leasers are?
As far as our regular pattern rentals?
Not just like the news review and the nursery school.
Okay, so we.
That are in there.
Yeah, so that's what, those are what we refer to as our tenants. And so right now, our our tenants are the Greenbelt Nursery School. Um, we have several artists and residents. Gate and the News Review, um, as well as um. We host offices for planning and community development and cares slash Gale. Um, we currently as in twenty-four have. Are you referring to free space groups, Greg? Like recognition groups, how many that we host?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so for twenty-four, we currently are hosting twenty-five. Different free free space slash recognition groups. Um, and then additionally, six uh city advisory groups that get free space as well. And two HOA groups that get free space. Uh, our pattern rentals, which which are paid rentals, we currently have. Um, fifteen of those and those are, you know, we call them pattern rentals because they they use, you know. Our 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 space at regular intervals throughout the year.
And then we always have the uh occasional birthday party, anniversary. Uh, you know, rentals for for those purposes, which are very important to the community too. Um, so we we wanna, we wanna be able to to offer that uh service to the community. Uh, without too much interruption to especially our pattern rentals, so. Um, we're looking at ways to do that, uh. Or at least give them enough notice. Um, that we may have to cancel a a time here or there for them. And I I do believe it's something we can handle at the staff level.
Hey, so when you're looking at utilization, I I know a lot of uh commercial. Uh, entities kind of look at the uh. Square footage and, you know, the percentage uh that it's occupied, so what it, the Community Center. Uh, how would you characterize the utilization? Would you say that it's eighty-five percent? Uh, used on the average or is it ninety percent or is it a hundred and five percent or is it?
What do you think, Andrew? I mean, it it there, there's busy times and uh.
Yeah.
You know, uh, it's it's also, it's also the home to our seniors, you know, it's their senior uh senior housing and and senior lounge and. In a game room and the food and friendship program.
It it fluctuates season- seasonally. I mean, uh, uh, summertime with with our summer camp programs going on, obviously, that's a busy time. Um, the biggest challenge is. Just the demand for specific spaces in the building. There's there's some rooms that don't get very much usage. But, you know, our gym is in high demand, our dance studios are in high demand, um, whether that's, you know. Um, free space groups trying to get use of those or all of our various programs that we have. So it's more so. Um, the de- demand for specific spaces within the building.
We encourage some of our our um, community groups to take advantage of other facilities as well. Like the multipurpose room in the youth center or the clubhouse at Shrum Hills Park. Um, they seem to have more open hours, but a a lot of these groups like to come to the Community Center. It's where they want to be.
Well, you know, just given the previous uh conversation where we talked about a rubric and an application. And just having a sort of a criteria. What, what do you use? I I'm sure there there is a standard application and there's a deposit, so how how does that work and? How has that worked in the past and are there some ways that we can streamline that or can make it more? More user-friendly or make sure that everybody is getting the same information about the availability?
Andrew, you want to talk about the?
It's it's already currently streamlined uh pretty well in September. Um, we start putting in for the year our our reservations for our programs. And then late September into October, we reach out to our advisory groups. And our recognition groups for their space request. Um, and then after that, we reach out to our pattern rental, so. There's definitely a priority for our 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 programs. And our recognition groups, their uh their space needs are are prioritized for sure before we get to our pattern rentals. Um, and we're actually currently looking into. Some revisions to our policies and procedures um that we're hoping um to implement. Going to into this next cycle, you know, that September, October, when we start beginning those reservations for the next year.
So this information is posted on the website?
Yeah.
This, you know, sometimes we have organizations, homeowners associations or different entities in the city. That are looking for a one-off function place. Uh, so it's. I guess it's not as simple as filling out an application. Sometimes they have to talk to staff to figure out what's available, what the alternatives. So is there an application and a process posted on the website?
Yes, and and oftentimes it does start with a phone call. And and from there, we can get an idea of what it is they're they're looking um to do in the space and we can give recommendations on what, you know, spaces we have would. Would best serve uh their purpose. And then from there, we'll, you know, get them to actually fill out the application, but that that is online.
And the the chain of approval, so it kind of comes to you, Andrew, first and then it kind of.
Uh, it it starts with the. In in regards to the Community Center, it starts with the Community Center Coordinator, Adam. Um, and usually he'll be able to handle most of the reservations on his own. Um, if there is some question and it's something kind of out of the ordinary. Um, he will bring it to the attention of the Community Center Supervisor, which it currently is 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 me. Um, so there is a a a chain of approval, but for mo- you know, your run-of-the-mill reservations, that's handled by Adam for the most part.
And is the process the same uh as doing something over in the uh Aquatic and Fitness Center or the Youth Center or Spring Hill Lake and? Like.
Yeah.
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 Okay, and it it just goes, you you call in over the phone or you look on the internet and it kind of goes through that same system?
Yeah, well, I a lot of times people will actually pop into the facility because they, if they're unfamiliar with it, they'll want to get eyes on the actual space. Um, so usually it's a a conversation in person or on the phone and then from there they fill out the application and. You know, we confirm availability and and go from there.
Okay, uh, Mayor. Uh, go ahead, Greg.
Uh, for for one-time rentals, we do have them come into the building. So we can meet with them and get an idea of what it is they want to do. We're, you know, we we wanna, we want to be open and accessible, but you also want to be protective of the building, just to make sure they understand the rules and policies.
Right. So recognition groups, well, first staff and the needs of uh of the uh tenants. Then it's uh recognition groups. Then the pattern rentals and after that, it's sort of. Uh, whatever time and space is left over for birthday parties or one-off rentals and whatnot and church groups. Well, I guess church groups fall into the pattern rentals.
Usually they would, usually they fall into the pattern rentals, yes.
We do have one church group that is a pattern rental, but we'll get the occasional, you know. We do have one church group that is a pattern rental, but we'll get the occasional, you know, uh, one-off rental.
The same thing if you wanna rent the gym for an event, but it's gotta be, can't be for profit. It's really a lot of the same rubric that we're using for the, uh, recognition groups is uh, app- applicable here. Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I just wondered, I know some of the questions that we've gotten have been for the groups that need the larger spaces, the concert band, the orchestra, I think sometimes honk situation when they need to practice indoors. Have we been able to figure out ways to accommodate those groups that need larger spaces?
Um, so far, yes, uh, it's, we're trying, you know, we wanna be, like, like we said, we wanna, uh, serve our community groups the best we can. We'd like to get more of a, a schedule in place, um, you know. Our, our current, or the policy that was part of the business plan is, is, uh, you know, these community groups are allowed to meet once a month for free. Um, you know, sometimes, uh, we have to, uh, not, or sometimes we have to go in another direction. A perfect example would be the peace and justice, uh, group. They generally don't meet at the community center, but they wanna celebrate peace and justice month. And they might want a room for a function two or three times in a given month and that's an exception that we make. You know, so again, you know, the, the decisions are made based on what's best to the, for the community, um, and not necessarily the bottom line of the revenues.
Yeah, and also the gym, according to the business plan from nineteen ninety-four, was designated as a space that was not available for free space use. But that's an example of something that we've kinda already started deviating from. For instance, the, the orchestra has had concerts there free of charge. Uh, we're just working, currently working through, um, setting a limit to that, just so we're not having to support too many, you know, regular events in, in, in the, uh, gym. Um, but we're confident we can come up with a, uh, solution that, that, that'll be really good for the community and, and allow access to, um, that gym for those groups that want it.
And I, and I will say as well, if you have been to a concert in the, the gym in the past, uh, compared, compared to now, we're trying to make the, 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 um, viewer, uh, the, the audience, um, trying to make it better for the audience with tiered seating and.
It is getting better, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and, but, and all that takes time to set up too, you know, sometimes it has to start the day before. Uh, and, you know, maybe the gym's out of service to our renters for a whole weekend. Um, so we have to take all that stuff into account. Um, so we're, we're working, like Andrew said, we're working through it now. Uh, we think we can do this, um, you know, through, through Andrew, Nicole, Adam, myself, uh, some others on, on the art staff. Um, but, uh, you know, it's gonna be a collaborative effort for all of us to make sure we're providing the best service to the community.
But there are some groups that, that meet much more often than, than monthly. Uh, I mean, I, cause I think some of the, some of the bands and orchestras, I mean, they're practicing, I don't think honk situation does, but I think they, I mean, they're, they're getting space weekly then, so there's been a pretty big increase in terms of the, 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 the expect, if the expectation was free space for recognition groups once a month versus weekly practices, which, you know, is maybe just an, an evolution that, that was natural and fine, but is something that is a pretty big difference compared to the way it was envisioned in nineteen ninety-five.
Yes, that's one of the revisions to our free usage policy that we're going to have. Is, it's actually, there's some groups that are as often as twice a week. Um, and, and, you know, we're, we're, we're being responsive to the needs of the community and things are different than they were in nineteen ninety-four and we'd much rather have, you know, a, a, a community group getting free space, um, than having an empty room, uh, that nobody's using, so that, that is one of the changes that will be in our free usage policy.
But it seems like our expectation as council should be that, that we are not, if we are going to provide this free space to all these groups at the frequency that to support, support the community groups, then we just have to subsidize the operation of the community center more than was originally envisioned.
Right, there, there will be some, there could be some, uh, you know, less revenue in our, in our rental opportunities, that you could see that. Yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to ask about that, just in terms of, uh, cost recovery, particularly with, uh, you know, the, uh, the birthday parties and, and the other kind of rentals. I, I know if you want to use, uh, the public schools, you wanna use, uh, the gym or auditorium over there, quite often, you, it's quote-unquote free, but you have to, uh, pay for staff time, someone to kind of open up the room and close up the room, so, uh, what, what is the philosophy of the practice in terms of, uh, cost recovery for, for groups that are renting?
I- is that for our, our groups that are getting free rentals?
No, for groups that are not getting, that are getting subsidized rentals, groups that are using the facility, but maybe don't qualify for free. You're not proposing that everything in the community center should be free, are you?
Certainly, certainly not, no. Um, thi- this is just, you know, we're having to uh, revise our free usage policy as it pertains to recognition groups and those that qualify for this, for the free space.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we have, we have regu- a regular fee structure, um, that, that is assessed um, to anybody that doesn't qualify for that free space.
And just out of curiosity, what, what is that? How do you go about uh, devising that fee structure? Is it based on staff time or square footage or how, how do you do that?
I don't know how they were originally. Um, I think it's, yeah, I think they were based on square footage. Um, and then we will reassess and kinda compare to, um, our spaces to neighboring jurisdictions and I believe just not this past fiscal year, but the prior fiscal year, we just raised fees and we were long overdue for that. Um, but right now we're, we're pretty com- comparable to neighboring jurisdictions, so we always look at, you know, what others are charging. But for the most part, it's based on size of the room, how many, uh, people, uh, the particular room can accommodate, things like that.
Right, I, I think during the, during our budget work session, there's part of our packet includes, uh, what neighbor, neighboring jurisdictions are charging and square footage per square foot and everything else, and we try to be, uh, I think we follow park and planning a lot on that, try to be, uh, comparable to park and planning. Um, and we, we assess the fees every year, you know, if we think they need to be raised, we'll certainly present that to council during the work session.
Mm-hmm, okay. Counsel, other questions? Uh, let's see, I see Jay Davis has her hand up. Do you have much more to present, Greg and Andrew?
Um, we're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's pivot to Jay Davis, are you there?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to thank staff because I think what we haven't really mentioned and we really should is that the staff that works the community center, especially with all these groups and they all have different requirements for chairs or tables or they need this, they need that. And the center leaders, the people that are there behind the desk, they're also trundling chairs all over the building, cleaning up, making sure everything is, is right, checking on the, on the bathrooms and our clean, our public work staff that keeps that place clean. You can literally see yourself mirrored in the floor right now because they really did a great job over the summer after camp was over and making sure the floors were, were done. That building is, is remarkably maintained and that's a good thing. And it's staff that's doing that, whether it's public work staff or, or recreation staff. And I think that they deserve a great round of applause and thanks and gratitude because if they weren't being so meticulous, we would have a building that would be starting to fall apart and we don't need that or want that. So, um, I think that what the recreation department has been doing is morphing with the times, they've been, and they've, and, and then be keeping council informed of all these changes as well. So even though where you're looking at a business plan that's thirty years old, a lot of that has changed and I think staff can bring that up to date and can modernize it and making sure it's up to date so that it's, it's suitable for what we use right now, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Mayor Proton?
Yeah, have we, have we been able to get any more, um, usage of the commercial kitchen yet? Seems like, I know that, that, uh, Cheers had an event they were doing in there, but that seems like that's, that's one that's a potentially underutilized space that, that could be generating some more revenue if we could leverage it properly.
We get very infrequent inquiries for that space. I know we're listed on several websites of ha- as having a commercial kitchen. And, you know, I, Di preceded me as a community center supervisor, I'm just filling in temporarily. I've had a couple phone calls while I've been fill, filling in, in the past three months. Oftentimes the problem is the county and state licensing requirements and permitting requirements. Folks won't follow through with that. Um, that being said, the commercial kitchen is used five days a week. Um, for the nutrition program.
Right.
Um, and we do have, um, one, um, rental on Mondays where, uh, family comes in and makes their mole on, on a weekly basis. Um, I will say that one of the things that the, our new hire for the community center supervisor who yet to be hired, uh, one thing we'll, we, we will be tasking them with is trying to get that, um, more usage out of the commercial kitchen, work on advertising and hopefully get some more folks in there.
And I guess my, my follow-up just more broadly is, um, what, it sounds like Greg, that this plan was at staff level and wasn't something that was ever, you know, council approved necessarily. But so I guess my other question in this doesn't, this may be for more of the end of the conversation, but, you know, what do you need from council to help you in this process? Is there, is there anything you need from us? But that may be a more summary question at the end.
Yeah. I, I don't think we need anything from council. We're happy to, uh, bring the information back to council when we rework our policy and procedures, so you can take a look at them and have a good idea of how we're, uh, managing our, all of our users, all of our stakeholders. Um, um, so we're, we're happy to bring that back to you guys. And, uh, and again, I, I don't know that we call it a business plan, more of a policy and procedures, um, plan, something like that, but I, I think it's important that we are responsive, we continue to be responsive to the community, uh, and, and, and the needs, you know, it, it's been my stance that the community center is the community's community center. And, um, and we need to listen to them and, and, and as you guys do and, and, and manage the facility how the community wants, uh, wants us to manage the, the facility, so. Um, those, that's our goal, that's our management objective. We will certainly bring any changes back to council.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Uh, I guess one concern though, as, as you move forward with modifications that, that we are as transparent as we can possibly be so that uh, folks in any part of the city can easily become aware, aware and knowledgeable about the policies when just in terms of who to talk to or how to, uh, take the first step, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to challenge him than you might think if, if you don't really know anyone. You know, if you don't really know where the facilities are and, actually on the website, there's a pretty good description of each of our facilities. But, uh, just continuing to emphasize transparency is something that's very important to me. Council member McKinney?
I just wondered if, um, in all of the different requests that you get for usage in the building, is there, um, a type of usage that you're seeing more and more um, interest in that we are not able to accommodate? And, you know, and it could just be because the space doesn't allow for it or whatever that might be. I'm just thinking for future planning purposes and I know we are, are talking just space utilization in the city overall. I'm just, just curious what you're hearing.
Not, nothing particular comes to mind.
I think the.
We're so accommodating.
Yeah, yeah, we are. The, the one thing that concerns me, um, somewhat is, uh, the, the spinoffs of the, of the Greenbelt Concert Band, the Greenbelt Orchestra, what comes from that orchestra? Will there be another group? Um, you know, they all wanna perform in the gym. Um, you know, that, that's great, but it does concern me a little bit when we have our own programs and our rental, pattern rentals in there. Something we're gonna have to manage. We, we encourage these groups to look at other venues as well, uh, check in with Eleanor Roosevelt High School, they have a great auditorium. Um, you know, so we don't wanna be their only solution. We'd like to be part of their solution, but we'd like for them to explore other, other opportunities too.
Yeah, I would, I would say performances, like Greg said, that, that, that does come to mind because we don't really have a performance space. We managed to transform a gymnasium temporarily into a performance spa- space, but it's really not the ideal situation for that, so.
Just, uh, interestingly, when I was going through the news review archives, trying to get information for this work session, there was a proposal to turn the gym into a a performance space, um, uh, way back when. There's actually a picture in the news review of what it would look like. Uh, but it, it did, that did not get very far.
And we really don't have that. I mean, the, the movie theater, the acoustics are very, very, pretty good in the movie theater. Uh, but, you know, who knows, somewhere off in the distant horizon, the city may actually have access to some new facilities. Who knows what may happen in the next year?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm glad the staff is, is confident in their ability to, you know, manage things right now as they are. But, but I'm wondering, uh, if you see a time in the future, you know, because of the growth in the, in the rate of, you know, in the amount of, of services and you know, the community center is only gonna hold so much and serve so much. Uh, so do you see a time in the, any time in the future when uh, the building is not gonna be able to meet the, the demand? And, and what can we do to?
Certainly possible, council member Roberts, like I said earlier, we're trying to defer some of these groups into other, other spaces that are more readily available. Like the community center, or the, I'm sorry, the, the youth center and the, uh, Shrimble's Park Clubhouse. Uh, who knows, like Mayor Jordan said, what comes online in the next few years? Um, so, yeah, it's a challenge, uh, you know, we'll, we'll keep assessing the situation. If we need to come back to council and talk about this again, you know, we'll, we'll certainly send up another work session.
We've got a beautiful building up on Southway that used to have a pretty nice, uh, gym floor in there. Here it's not looking too great now, but, uh.
And who knows, maybe someday we'll get ahold of that building.
So, you know, I'm really wondering, uh, you know, what's going on with the armory property.
Yeah, Mr. Summer?
Please.
Hmm.
So, because the community center is, uh, they get maxed out. Anyway, thank you, thank you for everything you do.
Mr. Summer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, to, to Mr. Roberts' point, I think some would argue that we've maybe have exceeded the capacity of a community center, given the high demand. Uh, but looking long-term, uh, we obviously have our eyes on, on the armory. Um, we hope to have news on that by the end of the, by the end of the year. We've, we've, uh, sent several communications to HUD and have leaned on our partners at the, at the state level or a particular congressman Van Hollen's office, uh, and, and Ivy's office to help us expedite or get, uh, get HUD to move a little faster on the D transfer. Um, we've, we've, we received good news at the beginning of the week that they claim to be re- re-engage and working on that D transfer and, uh, we'll once, uh.
Let me, so, so I'll believe it when I see it, but.
Yes, yeah, so, so. So some of the things that we're working on, we're, we're gonna be bringing a, a, um, a contract for the feasibility study to council. Um, should everything go well, we, we're shooting for, uh, the September ninth or the second meeting in, in September, uh, so that we can engage a contractor on the, on the feasibility study. The other thinking long-term, there is an approved project for the Beltway Plaza and part of that project includes a transfer of physical space for the city to develop recreational spaces for that part of town. So there are, there are things in the future, we, we're just not able to, we don't have control over things. As, as powerful as council is, those are things that we just don't control yet.
And, and just to add to that, I think one thing, and I've talked to council about this collectively and individually is uh, a game changer for us is if we could get use of our local schools as community centers after hours, uh, would help tremendously, but we've had no luck with that. So if there's any assistance council can give us with that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we continue to, uh, to work on that and we'll be having a work session with our, uh, school board member in the near future. But let me just say, I mean, there's, there's so many wonderful things we can do, but, you know, we have to also recognize our limitations. Recognize our limitations. And looking around at our sister municipalities, even Bowie, for example, we have way more. Facilities, more buildings, and if you include the park as infrastructure, we we've got more infrastructure than most other municipalities in Prince George's County. And that that's one of the reasons why our tax rate is a little bit higher than some of our sister municipalities is we. We do provide programs and we have facilities. The council has to also be mindful, council and staff, that uh, you know, there's there's a capacity issue. Uh, that's it's there as well. So balancing that, that's the balancing act that the city manager has to. Uh, to walk on our behalf. Let's see, I see Jay Davis has her hand up. We're gonna take a question. I'd like to go ahead and wrap up and go to information items. Uh, anything else you wanted to add, Greg, before we go to Jay Davis?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, Jay, are you there?
Yeah, Jay Davis, and I keep forgetting I'm supposed to say Greenbelt East. Um. One of the, you mentioned about the Performance Theater. That was a project I know Conrad Hurling would probably bring it up. They, we were going to put together a black box theater. It was not gonna be in the gym. It was gonna be like an addition to the. Community center in some way, but it was a black box theater. Um, switching topics, I'm glad you brought up the Armory because I am very concerned about the Armory's con- condition. And I'm sure that staff is too. The walls of the Armory now, the exterior walls are now being covered with graffiti. Uh, and it's very obvious, it's on one side, they're just climbing up on on the roof and they're they're just putting graffiti everywhere. And if they're doing that, then I have a horrible feeling that they're also getting into the building. And I hate to think of what damage. Kids, teens, young adults are doing to the inside of that building. So I'm hoping that we can get some some help. Uh, either cleaning it because when you have graffiti, it it grows. And uh. That's, I was very concerned about that.
But yeah, you know, I I had a conversation with Mr. Summer and just a week. Week ago, two weeks ago on this very topic, so we're monitoring the situation. He's monitoring the situation closely and. Doing what we need to do to secure the building to to make sure that uh. That it's not deteriorating too fast, but that's also why our partners on the federal level. Really need to uh, and are stepping in to help us move this forward, this process of. Trying to acquire the Armory has taken way too long. Mr. Summer.
You you cover most of it, Mayor. Just gonna reiterate that that we are aware of the of the graffiti and the vandalism at the site and we're using that as. Uh, as additional information to follow up with HUD and that. Uh, we we emphasize the risk that this poses for public safety, that a property being unmonitored and. Uh, being being the way it is, that where we don't currently have authority to go in and and secure the facility is problematic and it creates. A nuisance and a public health risk that is unacceptable for us. So we use that as a basis to try to get things moving, moving uh, faster.
Glad to hear that.
Is the federal, is the federal uh, government exempt from our uh. Uh, requirements for code enforcement and so on?
Yeah, I believe they are.
I don't, I don't really think so. Because if they're, if they're creating a public nuisance. Uh, we can cite them on that. And uh, you know, maybe that would excite them enough to 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 do their job and and show us that building because. We should not be allowing to let it sit there and and do that.
The staff is very aware of of the situation and is on top of it right now.
Get it done because.
Yeah, get it done. Hey, I would like, sorry, I'm having a hard time. When you're calling in on the phone, it's it's just kind of hard to hear sometimes. I'm sorry. Wrap things up. Cause there's a couple of information items, uh, you know, Mr. Varda, Mr. Phelan. Nicole DeWald, to all of our recreation, community center staff, uh, you know, we are so. Fortunate, you know, to have such dedicated staff, so focused on programming and serving the needs of the community. It's just. It it's an incredible uh, benefit for us all. And so your your vision and your hard work on uh, you know, the business plan, bringing a business plan up to date and. You know, thinking through these processes for uh, facilitating community groups and other organizations to. When they can come in and use the facilities, how they can go about doing it, very, very important. So I I really appreciate the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, uh, we are happy to provide the services and programs and we're happy to provide them in such a beautiful building like the. Community Center and we really appreciate the support that the council has given the the Recreation Department over the many, many years.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Hey, so we got a couple of information items. I know Mayor Protam has an item and of course, uh, there's some special things coming up this weekend. Labor Day weekend in the city of Greenbelt. Uh, Mayor Protam, go ahead, please.
Yeah, it was, I I had a question I was gonna ask, although I was able to 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 partially answer it myself because the news review for tomorrow is already posted. I was gonna ask if we had gotten the notice. Put in for the September twelfth. Um, it Town Hall Panel Discussion slash Town Hall, whatever you wanna call it, and it looks like it did not get in the um. The city ad for this week, so I just wanna make sure that we, if we've made those arrangements uh, for securing that space on the twelfth. That we start getting that advertised. Um, and then I I I think the other, the other aspect of that is that I what we. Um, I believe what we had talked about was that sort of that would replace our work session since we didn't have anything scheduled on September eleventh. Um, so if we can make sure that we remove that, because right now it's still, the city calendar still says. Uh, September eleventh TBD and it doesn't have that uh, September twelfth meeting. So if we can just make sure. Uh, that we we get that that updated and changed and then really make sure we get it in the news review next week, cause I was. I was hoping by having having talked about it early enough that we would get it advertised in two weeks of the news review, um. Uh, before the day of the meeting, um, so I just wanna make sure we get it in next week's.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. Uh, let's see, Mr. Summer. So, this is just such an exciting time of the year, so many things coming up with the Labor Day Festival. Uh, starting off with uh. With the opening uh, program, which that starts at uh, what time? Five thirty, six o'clock, six o'clock, I believe it is.
Six thirty is the opening, but.
Yeah, opening ceremony is six thirty.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. And of course, we'll be uh, unveiling. Uh, the outstanding citizen of the year at the program and just kicking things off and it's really gonna be an incredible week. The weather's looking pretty good. So any thoughts or? Things you wanna share about uh, the upcoming uh, Labor Day weekend is from the city's perspective. Public Works and the city looks great just throughout uh, Roosevelt Center and all all throughout town. Everything looks really, really nice. The landscaping, the preparations, and as you were mentioning uh, earlier tonight, uh. You know, the rides and everything are coming in, so it's it's quite the transformation that uh, uh. Historic Center of Greenbelt goes through each year in preparation for the Labor Day. Uh, festival. Maybe Amy, do you know any uh, specific details about? Uh, the parade or any anybody want to highlight an activity that's coming up during the festival?
Well, I know that my friend Michael is very much looking forward to um, other of the rematch for the pie eating contest. With you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, I.
You gotta be there.
I gotta be there. I I don't know, I just committed to uh, to Information Day from two to four.
Oh, well, lucky for you, the pie eating contest is at eleven thirty.
Oh, oh, but wait, I'll be over at the annual.
Surely you'll be done by then.
This Association Social. Okay, I'll probably go on the guilt, but we'll we'll see. My my title, some somebody has to kind of stand up. For the future, for the past and everything else. You know what kind of pie they're gonna have?
Oh, I don't. I think Greg would probably know, but.
Greg would probably know. Mr. Summer, do you eat pie?
I I do eat pie. I don't know that I could eat a whole pie.
That is a very specific process we go through. Greg, do you want, can you elaborate on the pie eating contest?
I don't know, I don't know the type of pie, but I could tell you they're probably getting them from co-op.
Uh huh.
So.
I gotta tell you, i- if I am able to be there. Uh, let me just say this, I'm sure that I can eat that pie faster than anybody else on city council.
We'll see, we'll see.
I would not challenge you on that. That is one thing I would not challenge you on, so.
We will have uh, people out taking pictures, so uh, beware that. Anything that you do with the pie eating contest could get put into a publication.
Okay.
We're trying to encourage him to do it, Greg.
Well, you know, I'm not throwing out the the gauntlet or anything to my fellow council members who probably enjoy a slice of pie from time to.
Yeah, I I prefer to enjoy my my pie at leisure and not try to eat it as quickly as possible.
Not with your hands behind your back?
Um, but on a more serious note, I did wanna thank Hosway and I guess probably Public Works. The city looks so beautifully manicured right now. I mean, I was walking even Stream Valley Trail and all of the uh. Grass on the other side of the, whatever you call the gully is mowed. I mean, the city looks beautiful, so well done across the board.
Yeah, Public Works has really done a good job. The entire team, they're really the. Done a lot of a lot of preparation work uh, leading up to uh, Labor Day festivities, including. Power watching the Roosevelt Center, around the lake, uh, a- along Crescent Road. The whole city, the whole city. We had, the team was in on Saturday as well, working, trying to get uh, get things prepared, so.
And I gotta tell you, that base of the uh, mother and child statue in Roosevelt Center, it just it just looks so nice. Uh, and all the Roosevelt Center, you know, just thank you, thanks to Public Works and. Uh, everybody that's worked on my project to finally get that done.
That was uh, that was Nicole and Terry did a lot of work on that project.
Thank you, Gordon.
Yeah.
That looks good.
Yeah, no doubt. Well, uh, if there's no other business we have to take care of, let's uh, let's go ahead and call it a night. Uh, thank you, thank you so much. See you at the Labor Day Festival.
Good night, everybody.
Is it just one slice of pie?
It's just one slice of pie. It's only a single slice of pie. You don't have to eat a whole pie.
You can't use your hands, though. You have to.
Yeah, you put your hands behind your back and you have to lean down and eat the pie without without using your hands. So I bet you could do it, Hosway.
So I got a couple of days to prepare.
Yeah, I mean, you can work on it, uh, you know, just work it into your schedule. I mean, you can try and if I'm there, you know. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose.
You know, my my friend Karita joins the pie eating contest, but she's not in it to win it. She's in it for free pie. I don't really wanna win, I just wanna piece of pie. That's an option. If you're just like, I could just use a piece of pie, I don't necessarily need to win, so you know.
I think she knows my secret.
Yeah, all right. What time is it at? At eleven?
Eleven thirty, I think, Greg.
But, okay, okay, okay. All right, all right. Challenge, I'll be there.
Okay, we'll see. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right, good night.